Okay, welcome everybody to the committee of the whole meeting for May 8th, 2019. I'd like to call this meeting to order at 3:00 PM. Are there any declarations of conflict from councillors? Seeing none, are there any changes to the agenda? I will ask for adoption of the agenda then please, first and second, in all favor. And we have one delegation today, so I'd like to welcome Staff Sergeant Poppy Hallam, our C and P, and push the little button till your microphone goes red and give it to us straight.
Well, good afternoon, thank you. This is my first council meeting with the District of Seashells, so thank you. I'm surprised it's gone this long actually, so my apologies. But yeah, so I've been here since September now, and part of when I arrived is I wanted to work with the community to get an idea of what things are important that the community wants from their police, and what sort of things that we really need to focus on. And I've been working very hard at the communication part of things so that I'm around and available and able to get that information. So, a few weeks ago, I sat down with Mayor Seagers and had a conversation around some of the priorities that I see for the RCP on the coast for policing in 2019, 20. So our fiscal year is April 1st to March 31st. So we're 2019 into 20, so when you hear me, we're not calendar year, we're fiscal year. So it sort of sometimes may not match up with everything that you guys may see, but that's the way we do our reporting. And when I arrived, the sheets that we were using to report the crime stats, some of them had... The way we report crime to Statistics Canada in Ottawa is they have a certain amount of types of crime that you report, and some crime just doesn't get reported to Statistics Canada. And so, we spend a lot of time working on files that don't get reported to Statistics Canada, such as mental health. It's not illegal to be mentally ill. It's not a crime, so therefore it's not a crime that's reported. However, it is one of those things that the police do spend a lot of time on, and we go to a lot of calls for that. And when we do go to a call, that can involve two members at least, and time at the hospital. If somebody's apprehended under the Mental Health Act, we will take them to the hospital. We sit with that person, because they're a patient, until such time as a physician makes a decision, assesses them, and decides whether they should stay in care of the hospital or whether they can be released either to us because they have some sobriety issues or to family. And so those kind of calls, we can be anywhere from one to four hours. And you don't really capture that with statistics, you know, because it looks like we only had one call, but that call took two people for four hours. And so I was trying to find a way to be able to explain to our partners about what you're getting from your police and what we're doing and how we're spending our time, because if we sort of, if you get something that says "other criminal code," what would you guys think that is? And so therefore, the last detachment commanders would have to explain that other criminal code might be something like a breach of probation. And so we've decided that we're going to start working, so Matthew, he couldn't be here today, we're a little short-staffed at the front end next door, and so he's on counter duty, so he sends his regrets. But, so we've been working together on what sort of things that we can report on, or what would be beneficial for you to know. Overwhelming is proactive, proactive stuff that we're doing. And so I've brought this, it's not up on the screen, this is what Matthew did up today just to start looking at some of the things that we can report on. And I just don't want to confuse the issue. But our annual performance plan with the RCP, we have to do every year, we do what's called an annual performance plan, we call it an APP. Part of that is, gives us national priorities, divisional priorities, and then our unit priorities. So nationally, what as a police force nationally do we need to focus on? What as a division, in E-division being British Columbia, Yukon, what are we focusing on? And then what as a unit, what is a local thing we want to focus on? So they gave us three pillars. The first one being enhanced public safety, the next one being accountability and good governance, and the third being organizational excellence. You won't see that on there. Is it? Okay, good. Okay, so those are our three pillars that have been given to us nationally that we have to come up with by consultation with our community partners. What kinds of things are we going to work on as an organization locally that fit in with those pillars? And that's what Mayor Seagers and I, as part of our, some of our collaboration, our consultation, as well as I did this with Gibson's, and I did it at the Sunshine Coast Regional District Policing Committee meeting several months ago, talked about this. And what we found for the District of Seashells and for the coast in general is a reduction, looking at a reduction in property crime. So on the top here, you're going to see property crime in the blue. This is one of the things that we're going to report on regularly, is property crime. Part of property crime is our break and enters to homes and to businesses, as well as thefts from motor vehicles. Those are some of the things that we have had some issues with in the District of Seashell. And so we want to track that, and we want to do some, put some initiatives in place to reduce property crime. Some of those things are curfew checks. So the first line there, curfew checks. Any person who's been charged in the courts with a crime is, can be put on curfew if they have committed a crime at night, if they are somebody that we've caught in the middle of the night because they have been caught breaking into something or committing crime in the middle of the night. The penchant for them is to be out in the middle of the night, so therefore, part of their conditions, either of probation or a release document before they go to court, is to put them on a curfew that they will be at home between 10:00 PM and 7:00 AM, or whatever they work out with their lawyer too, because some people do have jobs where they can be out till 11:00 or something. But anyways, so curfew checks is one of our ways that we follow and keep track of our priority offenders, our prolific offenders who are out committing property crime. If we go to their house and they're not home, and they don't have a letter authorized through probation, they will get breached. So we put in a report to Crown Council saying, "This person was not home at this time, we knocked, we checked, mum came to the door, no, he's not home." And so they get a breach charge. And we check these people sometimes twice a night, because sometimes you'll go to someone's house in their home at midnight, police are gone, we're going to go out now. So we go back at 2:00, they're not home, because they feel that they've, you know, been checked once. And so, curfew checks become a very good way to track our prolific priority offenders. The second is street checks, and this one was not something that this detachment was really focusing on or reporting on to you. I think it's important. So, street checks are the checks that we do on people who are wandering around in the middle of the night in our downtown core. It's somebody that somewhere, like they're not out walking their dog, so they could be walking through your residential area, or they could be driving through your residential area, driving really slow, and it's 2:00 in the morning. What are they doing? Are they looking for like, open garages, or bikes left outside somebody's home, or whatever? Street checks are us stopping that vehicle, or stopping to that person, and identifying them, checking on them, asking what they're up to, and then recording that data. So the next day, or the day after, we get a report because there was a break and enter to a residence, and we had checked Joe Blow at 2:00, and the person wakes up at 8:00 in the morning, and their garage is open. So, I think that we have, we've been through the, you wouldn't know, but probably not, but our CRCC, so our Canadian, what's it called? I'm sorry, I'm having a... Public Complaint, the Commission for Public Complaints in Ottawa did a review on street checks, because it was a bit, there were some concerns in Toronto around profiling and the issues around street checks. And we have our, we were checked in the Lower Mainland District, and our street checks were done properly, and they weren't profiling, and there's certain criteria that must be met for you to do a lawful street check. And so what we're doing is some training around street checks with our officers, so that they get more comfortable doing them, so that they're capturing the data accurately, and they're not profiling. And so that is one of the things, as you can see, April 2018 to April 2019, our street checks gone up. I want to see that way up. I want to see it way up. And once it starts to go way up, then it's going to start to go down, because people, we're not going to have the people wandering around in the middle of the night, because they're going to get checked, and we're going to be all over them. And I think that's what we need to do for some of our efforts to reduce property crime. Proactive foot patrols, same thing. You know, it's going to assist with the property crime, but I think it's also very important for the accountability and good governance section, which isn't on that sheet, but it's something, that's one of our pillars, and visibility and community engagement is really important to all of our stakeholders on the coast. We're still a small town, but we're busier, and so the community still wants that engagement from their police officers, they still want their police officers wandering around and interacting with the public and our tourists, and in the places that, like Friendship Park and Hackett Park, those are places that we've been spending a lot of time lately, on foot patrols, checking the bathrooms, pushing people out of those bathrooms, for the safety and enjoyment of not only our community members, but also our tourists. Our tourists don't want to go into the bathroom and find somebody's using drugs in the bathroom. It's just not safe for anybody, and it's not good for our tourism. And so our guys have been focusing a lot on our foot patrols. Now, the numbers have gone down a bit, but that's also speaking to the, some of the issues that we've had just in the last couple of months, especially April, with our, with some of our more serious crime that have been taking our members away from the proactive stuff, and that's going to happen sometimes. Mischief files, mischief is two different things. It can be actual damage to property like vandalism, or it can be somebody failing to leave a property or premise when they've been asked. So mischief, believe it or not, has a kind of a twofold. It's either somebody not doing, you know, interfering with someone's enjoyment of property, or they're damaging property. It's two different things. So as you can see, our mischief is up. Some of it has been some damage to property downtown. We had a couple of our cannabis shops have rocks thrown through the windows. We've had some mischief as a secondary offense along with domestic violence, where the subject has gone out to a vehicle and smashed the window of the vehicle, that's a mischief. So they may be, there may be an assault charge with a secondary scoring of mischief. So, there wasn't really, even though it looks like it's, you know, it is doubled, right? 15 to 20, gone up to 29. It wasn't anything that was super, that stood out, it was just kind of, just a busier month. Theft from motor vehicles, we're sort of the same, no big spikes, but there was that, the one that we were showing, going to show you on the slide, which was the Davis Bay situation, where we ended up catching that fellow, but he went through a lot of vehicles. Break and enter files, same as last year, a little bit higher than the year before. That's obviously a priority to us, and that's where the reducing property crime thing is going to be important for us, is really spending time on our priority offenders, heating them up is a polite way to say it. Pay attention, because really, 10% of our people commit 90% of our crime, and so you have to pay attention to those people. So then road safety is the other part of the crime reduction strategies. We, as you can see there, like we're looking at what things we should be reporting on. I want, our members didn't realize that they were supposed to create a file in our prime computer system to capture a road check. So road checks are when two or more police officers stop traffic with visi vests on and stuff, and check sobriety, check for driver's licenses and insurance, and they didn't realize that when they set up those checks, that I needed them to create an actual file on it to capture that information. So they were out doing these checks, but they weren't creating a file. So there was no way to know for sure how many they were doing. So we're working on that now, that's one of the things that will be immeasurable in my annual performance plan, is creating, doing these road check files. May 18th is National Impaired Driving Enforcement Day, Saturday, May 18th, and so the watches that are working will be setting up road checks and spending extra time on enforcement on that day. And then I have to report that back nationally, it's a national priority. Yeah, and then, so the rest is, you know, speeding, electronic device, that's a big one that they want us to work on, so that one will be something I can report on. The impaired driving, we had, it sort of, looks like it's going down. It's a, it's a little mix of not having as much proactive targeted enforcement. We've been doing a lot of reactive policing in April, it's just the way it's been. Yesterday, they had 26 calls for service during their day shift, spread between five officers, it's a lot of, it's a lot of calls. So they were running, hopping, so. And collisions, down a little bit, which is good. We seem to have fairly steady, like there's never, like I would have thought when I moved here, just knowing that we have a lot, it seems that we have a lot more people here, and more traffic in the summer, and the ferry overloads, the collisions are staying the same, which I would have, I would have expected that we would see big increases, we're just not, which is good. But, and as you will have seen, we had our traffic enforcement blitz, went from Thursday to Sunday. I don't know if anybody went through any of that, or had to get, was pulled over, but we had the, our integrated road safety unit and our traffic unit from, that's based out of Squamish, they came over, and their motorcycle, and the dog, the police dog, it's a drug dog, was over as well, and I should have brought that, I had the stats. Prohibe driving, prohibited driving, so people who are prohibited under either the Motor Vehicle Act or the Criminal Code, quite a few of those on the coast, people continue to drive when they are prohibited from driving, so that's a court appearance, that's an arrest, and you get, you get released usually roadside, and you have to make a court appearance. It's a pretty big deal to drive without a license when you're actually prohibited, not just unlicensed, but prohibited. Quite a few people doing that still. Yet we have public transit here, so surprising. So that's sort of the couple things that I'm going to be reporting on for sure through crime reduction in our public safety side. The other things will be vulnerable persons and opioid use. We are working with the CAT team with, who is their opioid reduction team, we're working with them. The other thing we're doing is we have some targets. So we have provincial targeted enforcement program, which is our priority drug dealers. So these are people that are violent, that have a penchant for violence, and are known to be drug traffickers. We actually select persons of interest that, and they are, they actually, we report on this person, and it is, they're tracked, both provincially and nationally, through this PTAP program. And then, if we have these targets identified, we can get actual overt surveillance, so gang task force members in full uniform, they will come over to the coast and spend time here, they will go to our bars, they will go to people's houses, they will be around to try to interrupt criminal activity. And so I've made that a priority after coming here, as saying, hey, we need to get, we need to, we have some people that should be PTAP targets, we need them to be PTAP targets again, that's how we're going to get funding for extra enforcement. And so I just want you to know that that is happening, and that will bring us extra enforcement. We're working with the cannabis legislation, and the community safety unit is going to be coming over in the next two to three weeks, which I think is important for you to know, that our office has been working with them. So they are the cannabis inspectors, they're just like liquor inspectors, but they're cannabis inspector provincially. They are going to be coming over and paying visits to our retail, to any of the retail buildings, having conversation with them around the fact that they're operating outside of the legal framework, and they're going to be warned about that, that they need to get licensed, and if they're not licensed, when the community safety unit returns, they're going to be looking at fines and possibly shutting them down. So I was taking a measured approach around that, and allowing, because there has been some court challenges around the new legislation, and didn't want to put a bunch of effort and disrupt some of these businesses, and then find that we lose in a court challenge. So it was sort of allowing this to sort of find its way, and let this community safety unit do what they're, this is what they're mandated to do. We will support them in these investigations into retail, and we will continue to work on the illegal grow operations that are happening on the coast that are not Health Canada authorized, and we're getting, we have several in the District of Seashell. We're working with your bylaw officers and taking these complaints from the public and from your bylaws, and that's what we did with Nickerson, and we will continue. And just know that that is one of the, one of the priorities for us, because with some of these illegal grows is organized crime, and we just don't want that here. And I want that to be, what we're known for is illegal grows.
Thank you. Question around the dispensary piece. So we've issued them temporary use permits, we've got four, right, that we've issued temporary use permits to, and I believe two of them have applied for licensing?
They're in process.
Yeah, two are in process. So what will happen with them, given they are in process? You know, they're not legal yet, they have applied.
My understanding is they're going to still be warned, so my understanding is that they're going to, they're still, they're not licensed.
Yes.
So I think what's going to be important is when the community safety unit comes, and we, I was told they're coming for two days, and I think it might be pretty good for us to meet with your bylaw officers, and I think we said we were going to do something in maybe in our detachment coffee room, and have like an information session type thing for bylaws, like what is, what does this look like, and what is this like? So I think we should probably get some questions for them ready, and have your bylaw officers come and get the real, the real answers. But as far as I know, they're warning them right now that they're not licensed, and that they, they may be fined or shut down.
Okay, so do you get notified when, so like, we got notified about these two, because we have to do public consultation and actually say, do you get notified?
No, not yet.
Okay, so...
They're essentially on hold at the moment.
Do any, yeah, thanks. Sorry, through the chair. They're essentially on hold at the moment, we've received them, but because we haven't brought the bylaws forward yet, I've told, I've mentioned to the Regulation Board, here's where we are in the process, and as soon as the bylaws are adopted, we will process them. We've done an initial review through them, so the two that they applied would probably check most of the boxes in terms of location and the zoning and that sort of thing. But we do know of some that they'll never meet it.
Right. We were told this, this visit in the next two to three weeks is educational, the following visit will be enforcement. What form of enforcement they take, I don't know yet. I'll be interested to meet them and have those conversations. We were told this time is education. So, sorry, I better, I don't know where we're at, wrap it up a little bit here. So yeah, so you guys have this on the board, so, yeah, so the crime victimization, vulnerable person, you know, the rain city shelters, and they do their work, and we support them, we take their calls, if they have calls for service, they're very good about calling us if they, if they have issues, and they have people that need to, need medical help or, and/or police involved in. And so I don't think I'm going to be doing anything specific around, on my annual performance plan around that, more around the harm reduction and safety with the opioid use, I think. But we will continue to, I'll be reporting proactively around what kind of foot patrols that we're doing, and the meetings that we're going to. But I don't think there's really anything measurable that I would give you in a statistic around Brown, the shelters, because I don't know if it's really in the public interest if they really want to know how many calls for service we go to there, because it just depends who's staying. That person might, you know, somebody may have been staying at that, may have been living somewhere else, and was maybe at a problem residence, and now they've moved to the shelter, and is that, it's, I don't think it's something that we really, that I'll be actually reporting on how many times we go, but I think the way that we support harm reduction is important. The RCP supports harm reduction. It's a very interesting time for us to be police officers right now, because, you know, we do have a health epidemic with opioid overdoses, and it's really scary, but we don't want people to not call for help if they think the police are going to bust them. So it's that very, it's a weird time to be a police officer, because it's illegal, but we want to save a life. So we support it, and we're going to work, you know, the best we can around that, sort of, the safety of our communities is the most important thing around shelters and around that. So the crime prevention through visibility, this is going to be, is the, kind of hits on, hits, so I had actually written, I've been sort of writing some things, because I'm going to change it a little bit since I gave you that, but the crime prevention through visibility, intelligence gathering, that's going to be your curfew checks, your street checks, and where, and our crime analysts can tell us where are our hotspots. We have a crime analyst in Vancouver, that's part of their integrated cost that you pay, and that person can tell us where our hotspots are, and where are the issues that we should be focusing our time. And I've said before, people have asked me, oh, you know, we'd love to see you walking up and down Cowery, and you know, and I, I would love to do that, but I really need to put my, put our officers somewhere where, where the crime, and we can, we can sort of tell people where that is, but it's not going to be on Cowery all the time.
Mayor Seagers?
Thank you. One of the conversations that we had was around our homeless shelter and our supportive housing complex that is opening. When I went to the mayor's conference, what they'd indicated there was that in most municipalities, they found actually a drop in crime once those facilities were up and running. So I brought that to Staff Sergeant to say, you know, can you look at what the, what's happening in our area, because that would be important information for our community to know going forward. So I think you've done some work around that.
Yeah, so I brought that to the attention of our Lower Mainland Commanders at a meeting, and said, listen, this has come up for us, because Ridge Meadows was having some issues around their Saint Anne's camp, and some very, very public concerns around this, the affordable housing and the long-term housing. And they want, they were, someone was producing some information to the public that may or may not have been very accurate. So I said, how do we get those numbers? Like, how do we know is our, is our crime going to reduce when we have the supportive housing, where people have a permanent place to live, and a permanent supported place to live? And they are working with ourselves and NIMO, the Lower Mainland District is coming up with a way, it's going to try, and we are one of those places where they're going to look at our statistics and see if they, if there is a correlation between this supported house, supportive housing and crime reduction. So we're going to be one of those communities, because Mayor Seagers asked me that question, and I couldn't answer it, because I don't really know how to measure it. And I brought it forward, and they said NIMO was asking the same thing, because we're fairly cutting edge over here on the coast really with the stuff that we're doing, and I'm proud to be part of this community, where we are providing these kinds of housing for people, because it's a basic human right to be housed, and I fully support it, and if we can show, you know, if we're able to measure it and share that statistic and say, hey, like this is the things we're doing on the coast and it's working, yeah, I want to be able to do that. So that's in the works right now with our crime analysts. Moving along, so accountability and good governance, this is the part where I'm reporting to you, and I am reporting that I, like I'm accountable to you, and... And um I want to, um you guys are paying for eleven police officers, the funding of, at seventy percent of eleven of our police officers. There's thirty-five of us at strength on the coast. And um and I want you to know that what you're investing in and what you're getting. And so that's my job is to, is to demonstrate that. Um and so our general duty staffing analysis is um part of this computer program and it accesses the information that our officers put into the computers in their cars. Whenever they go to calls, whenever they go do foot patrols, whenever they do, do a curfew check. Um when they're on route to a call, when they clear, um when they're report writing. They're supposed to be updating their computers or the dispatchers. They can do it over the radio and the dispatchers will type in what they're doing. Um it's a way to track, without too much work, to track what our officers are doing. So that you can see, um it will, we can print out um spreadsheets and we can print out pie charts and things and it can show you how much time officers were spent doing this kind of thing, working on that kind of thing. Um and um the, really, how your money is being spent. And um it also is important for you as a council, when people are asking you, um we don't see the police a lot around here, we don't see the, you know, what, what are, you know, what is going on? Um or there's been a lot of calls down here, I'm, I'm gonna be able to give you um regular updates as to what we're doing, so you can answer your um your members and say, hey, like, this is your community, this is what the police are doing. So um we're just really did the training for that in late March to get people up um and really using it, cause they're using it, but only at about a fifty percent compliance. They're not really using it, we call it compliance, I don't, they're using it a fifty percent of the time, they're not updating themselves properly. We need it to be seventy for, for, to give a real accurate snapshot of what we're doing and then I can really report off of it. Um so we went from fifty to sixty-two percent in one month, which was excellent. And um so my big thing is like, once we hit seventy and we're, which I'm hoping to have in the next couple of months, then I can actually start generating accurate reports from it. Matthew feels that he's able to get a lot out of it, they're doing a really good job with the proactive stuff and putting in foot patrols and curfew checks. Um it's just so much easier, because you can run, you can just type in FP and it'll pull a list and then it's all the foot patrols where everybody was and then he can um drill down to what is part of the District of Seashell, what was in the regional district, what was in town of Gibson. So that's one of the things that um if, for accountability and good governance that I'm, that I'm committed to for you. Uh the second is um part of the visibility and community engagement. Um and I think uh communication as well and um I think, you know, documenting all the foot patrols we do, that will be part of it. Uh the next is uh myself and our community policing unit, our schools, um our school unit, our First Nations policing unit. We um are developing right now um a spreadsheet that we can um document, like today I was volunteered at McHappy Days and I was at McDonald's for a couple hours today. And um in the drive-through. And uh it was, went really well, um but uh, but like, you know, the, I, I had contact with quite a few people in the drive-through in two hours. Um and it's uh, you know, it's about being part of the community and being engaged, but nobody knows it if you don't tell them that we're doing this, like, if you don't go to McDonald's between eleven and one, one, you're not, you wouldn't have seen me, right? You wouldn't know that I was there and doing that. So we really have to kind of toot our own horn and, and, and talk about the things that we are doing. Um and the places that we're going and so that um we are gonna be reporting, maybe reporting more on some of that proactive stuff for you. Um and so that's my, you know, um and I think the communication um between the detachment and the District of Seashell is going very well. Um in my opinion, um I feel that uh, you know, Mayor Seeger's and I have a very good relationship. Um it's like on a personal, like, where I'm letting her know, like, I let her know, um that I let both mayors know and um Laurie Pratt, that um this traffic enforcement was coming over, I let them know right away on Thursday morning. So that if she's asked or you're asked what's going on, like, why is there a police dog here and what? Because community can get concerned. And I think it's really important, I didn't want to tell the whole community, because you, you do need to catch people, but, right? I mean, that's the whole point, is that we need to get some of these drivers off the road, right? But um I think that um I do my best to let them know um when stuff is happening, so that they know, cause I report to the mayor and that's important and to you. Um with our Half Moon Bay Fire, I know our Seashell Fire Department um backed up the Half Moon Bay Fire Department and we were there assisting with evacuation and it's how it worked, is we ended up taking the media side of it as well and our communication constable Whitby was tweeting out the information. Um so that, to keep, help keep the public safe, so they knew why, you know, not to go home or what was happening and um I think communication's a huge part of it and I'm doing my best to, to be that for you and uh I think it's, yeah. Important. Um and social media is one of the things that um is a national priority, that the RCP get in front of some stuff better through social media and that's how we use it. You know, it's Twitter and is a big way to get information out and uh we're there, so. And we work together too. So, yeah. Um and the last is organizational excellence, which is just, you know, um I'm very committed to this, I'm very passionate about it, because I think healthy police officers make healthy people, healthy, healthy police officers make better community members and do a better job for our community. If our members are healthy, if our members are getting sleep, if our members are trained and have confidence in, in their abilities, they are going to have better interactions with our community members. And it's just going to be better for us as a community. Um as you, I know, I'm sure you're aware, you know, mental wellness is a big problem for first responders. It's a way bigger problem than I think anybody really anticipated. Um and I'm taking care of some of my members who have what's called operational stress injuries. Their nervous system is damaged based on the repeated stress of um stressful situations where um not necessarily the um detachment morale or function, but just the, the, the function of being a police officer and having to go to, say, a fatal car accident. You can't just go and cry and go off and, and release that stress out of your nervous system, because you have to stay, you have to do photographs, you have to stay and do measurements. You have to wait for the tow truck, you have to take statements from the witnesses who were there. You're, the processes don't allow for the police officers to um to, and it's not manage, to process. So the processes doesn't allow us to process our nervous system properly and we're learning a lot about that now. And um so I've been doing fairly innovative things um to work with our officers. Um as you are well aware, we had um a fatality um where this gentleman um ran from us from the Toronto Dominion Bank. And our officers gave chase on foot and um they ended up at By Totem Lodge in the bushes. And um this, the male um was, couldn't, was having, struggling to breathe, he's out of breath from running and so was our officers. I mean, that was a, you know, hot run, fast chase. And um he was making complaints that he wasn't feeling well and he actually said, I think I'm having a heart attack. And we called for an ambulance immediately when he was having shortness of breath and unfortunately, he didn't make it, he had a massive heart attack and died. And um so our officers that were there, I was one of the officers that was there, not initially, but at, while he was getting, having CP, CPR administered. And um for some of our officers, that's the first time they've ever had somebody die in front of them. Um and they tried so hard to save him, they tried, they didn't, weren't sure what was wrong, they tried the lock zone. Um and this was not a drug situation, this was actually a real massive heart attack. And um our officers, you know, it was very, very upsetting and we got back to the detachment and um and people were very upset and um part of that too is that they become under investigation for their conduct. So not only are they traumatized by somebody passing away in front of them, but now we have the British Columbia Investigations Office that I have to report this death to, because there's a nexus between what hap- what occurred and this gentleman dying. Our officers are now investigated for their conduct. So it becomes a very more stressful situation. And um so what happened was um Dr. Lisa Kit, who's psychologist on the coast. Um she's recognized by the RCP to do critical incident stress debriefs and she um does work with some of my officers. I called her and she ca- she actually reached out to the officers that night and provided them um some, some ways to get their, clear their nervous system, I sent them home. I didn't make them continue to work. Um I sent them home and she reached out to them and um were able to clear that nervous system and clear it out, um so that it doesn't stick and it doesn't start to build PTSD. So I'm really proud of the fact that we ha- we're, like, we're innovative on the coast in a lot of ways and I have the, the flexibility and, and the ability to um to do some innovative things with our officers and um and so Lisa Kit has been coming in regularly and coming in and talking to the officers just about this stuff and, and um Bob Rich, who's retired Abbisford PD um chief, he's going to be coming over, we're probably not doing it till September now. Um but he, they're gonna be doing a um two-day PTSD um training thing with our officers and so we're really looking forward to that. And the last thing, um you know, well, there'll be more training too around the employee development, we're doing lots of in-house training. And then the cul- cultural competence um is one of the things that's a national priority. We did get funding um through Civil Forfeitures Grant to have um the local indigenous um Seashell band come in um and do blanket exercises with our officers and do some cul- cultural training and we're gonna be able to pay the elders for coming in to do that, because we've got specific funding for that and um so we're gonna work with Sayaya and um reconciliation and um do some cultural trainings, really excited about that and um we're working on that. So that's sort of my um annual performance plan stuff, these are the things that, you know, I'm working on and then we'll, we'll be able to start um giving you some feedback onto how we're making out.
Thank you so much for all of that. Um questions from council? Counselor Lamb.
You said the, just the other day, you said there was twenty-six calls. Is that yesterday? So would that be just in the Seashell area or would that be the whole coast?
That was for the whole coast.
Okay.
Yeah.
And would that be, would it be one officer per call or would, would it depend on the incident?
Well, for instance, domestic violence requires a minimum of two. So that was the thing, it was pretty, it was um we had officers up in Midyarra Park for um, for a high-risk domestic violence apprehension that we're trying to do. Um and we did, we have a few calls in Seashell right now, we have um a property on Medusa that um we're having to frequent, we have a couple, couple places that we've had to go there today as well again. Um we had, yeah, we had quite a few calls in Seashell, but I can break that down and we normally would, um in those monthly stats that, like, we get, that Matthew was doing, we just wanted to do something a little different today, just to show you, but um the, it breaks it down for the calls for Seashells and um for the regional district and then the town of Gibsons, we have it broken down.
And, and you mentioned, there's thir- is there thirty-five officers on the coast? That's what the to- that's what we have right now.
Yeah, so we um, we're authorized strength of thirty-five, including myself. Um so there's thirty-five police officers. Um right now, we're waiting for um Constable Lee Best to come from Fort St. James, so that brings us down to thirty-four and then um Darren McKay, um he's a corporal, he's coming, he starts on Friday, so um we're happy about that. Um we have Jackson McIntosh is coming from Depot, he's a new graduate, he's gonna be here May seventeenth, I think, is when he starts. Um and he's gonna be replacing Constable Ed Harrison, who's transferring out to uh Port McNeil. Um so we have, um we're pretty good as far as transfers are concerned, we're just short one. Um just waiting uh for Lee Best to come and I've asked to, I've asked to double book that position. Um because I don't know when Lee's gonna get here. And we have two other officers who want to transfer out. And um so as long as I'm not o- have more in my office than, than um what we're allowed to have, um I'm okay. So um I've got two officers right now who are on long-term, um like, we call it ODS, off-duty sick. Um one has an operational stress injury that he's working on um and working hopefully to clea- to fix his nervous system. And then we have another officer who's off waiting for surgery. Um so we're down two on that side of the house. Um and then I have one fellow who can't go out on the road quite yet, he had an operational stress injury as well. And we're working on getting him fully operational. Uh so he can't take calls, he can work in the office. And then we have another fellow who is on parental leave. So we're not at full strength right now, they, those would be, those parental leave and the two um off-duty sick are considered soft vacancies. So they're technically on the books, but I'm not paying for them right now, they are under a different collater. So we call them collater, they're codes that the RCP uses to bill and pay for things. There are those two officers that are on long-term sick, they are paid for through um a medical collater. And the parental leave fellow is on a leave without pay, but through a different system, so we're not paying for those three. And then we're not paying for Lee Best right now. Um so we're, we're technically down four at the moment, um which is not great. Um but we were down eight two weeks ago. And it was really, it's been very hard on the officers to get tired. Um so as Doug can speak to, um I've been running vacancies um since I got here. Um and I've been doing my best to keep it even um between the provincial budget, cause twenty-six police officers are paid for, or twenty-four police officers are paid for by the province. And then eleven are paid for by yourself through the, through um the District of Seashell. And so what I try to do is when I have vacancies, I run vacancies on equally between the provincial side and your side. Um and, and so that, because, so that you're not paying, like, I'm saving you money as well, I don't think it's fair that the province shouldn't have to pay, but you should pay more. So I've been running those vacancies equally between the province and yourself. So the last few bills have been billed at nine point five people instead of eleven. So um I guess Doug can sort of speak to this, but they estimate um each police officer, like, how they give the funding is based um like, how they charge you is based on um the cost per police officer at seventy percent. Um cause with the size of this uh municipality is billed um with, at seventy percent. And they estimate each police officer to be about, cost about eight hundred and eighty thousand. Not that we're paid that by any means, especially the poor new recruits that come out, but um the fact of the training and the costs of the fuel and all the things like that, sort of each person, that's the way they kind of look at it. So they've been billing um the estimated bill, you guys have authorized us to have eleven people um paid for by the District of Seashell, I've been charging you for nine and a half. Um that's what's been happening um to save money equally, because between the province and yourself. Um so um ideally, I would like to have all eleven positions filled, um that's my goal, um because we re- we really need more than that. So um and I'm, I'll be open about the fact that um, you know, the province is, is um, needs money, it doesn't have a lot of money. And we've, um they've been looking at ways to cut the cost of policing in this province and yet this, the processes of um rec- court requirements and disclosure, like the, you know, uh an impaired driving charge ten years ago was this, they can announce this and, you know, a homicide is, you know, thirty thousand pages of disclosure. And in two thousand, it was fifty. It's just that the court systems just require so much more from us and, and the times and so um I've uh, you know, like, for us to manage, like, we haven't had a, an increase to establishment on the coast since two thousand and ten, I believe it was. Um when you guys gave us one more. So we went from ten, right? I think it was two thousand and ten? It was two thousand, I think it was, somewhere in there. Um and yet, as we know, the coast is getting bigger and busier. Um yet we're not, we're not getting, um we're not getting more people. Um so I may come to you um in the future and talk about um seeing if we can get another body. Um and Gibsons will, the town of Gibsons is going to be, um you know, they're, we're, I'm involved in their policing committee uh because they're looking at going over five thousand and having um a bill for policing as well. And uh so um that's, you know, part- And uh so um that's, you know, part of the the deal, but we're growing and we're growing. And um it's, yeah, it's hard to do it with thirty-five, let alone sometimes when we only have twenty-eight or twenty-nine due to injury or transfers. So part of my um accountability and good governance is doing the best job I can to manage these staffing vacancies. Um and ensure that we don't get too many people and overcharge and then go over budget with you, that's not fair. Um so I'm doing my best to manage my staffing by not getting, bringing people in and getting a surplus. But also trying to manage so the members don't get burnt out, so.
Are there any other questions?
Yes.
So Gibsons, once they hit five thousand, then they have to actually pay out an additional portion. Um we're paying, what does the regional district pay?
Well, they're they're they pay the police tax, right, like, cause they're, they just pay, I don't, somebody told me it was around eighty-six dollars a year or something. For like what any person in the province pays who's not in a municipality over five thousand, it's a police tax. Um I don't. This play, I think it's called Police Tax, and somebody told me it was eighty-six dollars, but I'm not sure. I I don't wanna be quoted on that, but because I've been working with Gibsons and cause the cost now, they would be seventy percent of. Four or five officers, based on their population, um how many officers would they need to have to pay for? Possibly four or five, but are we gonna get four or five more police officers on the coast? No, it's going to just be a funding change, it's just gonna, they're just gonna pay, it's just the money, right? Um and so really, like, I need to um do s- do my homework and get some stuff ready. Um and look at, hey, like, how many officers do we need and do we need to increase this? Because I I feel that we do, uh but I haven't been here a year even yet. And so I really wanna get a feel for what what we need to do.
Anything else?
Yes, so on your, on the sheet that you gave us today here, so when you talk about curfew checks and you've got a number. So it says ten, April two thousand nineteen, is that like ten people?
Yep.
Ten separate checks?
Yep, ten, it was ten checks, that's it, for the month.
So it could be one person that you check twice a night, that would count as two?
Uh no, I think Matthew's got them on the same, like, the same one person per line. Um so there, we do have less people on curfew at the moment too, so I should say that. So not as many people to check right now, not as many people on curfew. We have quite a few people who actually um have got jail sentences instead of probation in the community. Um and uh and are on some uh weekender jail sentences. And um so we don't have as many people on curfew right now. Um but some of the curfew checks, um the de- like, I'm being perfectly honest, the reduction, some of it. Is the fact that we've been doing more reactive than proactive. Um the month of April was ver- has been a very much a reactive month, unfortunately.
Okay, at the bottom of the page.
Yep.
Said this chart identifies prime files for the month indicated excluding file scored as unfounded, unsubstantiated, information prevention and assistance. And some files have more than one offense slash category.
Right.
So if if in two thousand eighteen.
Yep.
The numbers that you recorded, would those have included some of those files? That maybe not included in two thousand nineteen, or was that adjusted?
Yeah, so um so that the so that the council understands. So we have changed in our scoring, um the way we score files. Um what happened was um the Canadian, oh man, I C-C-J-S, Canadian. I don't remember what it is, but anyway, statistics, so Statistics Canada um made a decision. So back a few years ago, the Globe and Mail did a story called Unfounded, and it was about sexual assaults and unfounded. Um and there was concern around police departments, um. Uh people, mostly women, were coming forward to report sexual assaults. And um the police were investigating and saying it was unfounded, it didn't happen. And there was concern around um the use of that scoring of unfounded. Um because really, it often was he said, she said. Um and if we, what they were doing is if we couldn't prove that it didn't happen. Um it was either, if we could prove it didn't happen, it became unfounded. If we couldn't prove um whether it happened or not, it would get a scoring of called unsubstantiated. Meaning we couldn't substantiate whether a crime happened or not. And there was a negative um stigma or con- uh connotation around unsubstantiated. Because the victims were feeling like they were reporting this and this crime happened, but we couldn't prove it. So we were, um it kind of was getting reported like it didn't happen, cause we couldn't prove whether it did or not. And so what they decided to do was either um either something was founded or it wasn't. And so therefore, um it takes a lot of work to, it takes a lot to determine whether something didn't happen. Um an impaired driver, for instance, is fairly easy, if you do catch them, pull them over and they don't smell like alcohol. And there's no signs of of impairment, well, then it's unfounded, like they are not impaired, they were not impaired driving. And we can say that that is completely unfounded. If a woman is um sexually assaulted and her breasts, her breasts are touched or something. And we can't prove that he touched her breast, she says he did, he says he didn't, um it doesn't mean it didn't happen. It just means we can't prove it, so we leave that as founded, um and not, we don't say unsubstantiated. Um so it's it's quite important, um I think it's uh, it doesn't. Um so it can skew the the uh stats a little bit. Because it's gonna look so for some offenses, it may look like they've actually gone up. Because um we're reporting them now because they're founded, because we can't say it didn't happen, so we're leaving it as founded. So we may see some artificial stuff, in here, there's none, cause everything's sort of gone down mostly, a lot of things have gone down. Um but um the uh, so we're not gonna be using, there won't, there's no such thing as unsubstantiated anymore. So that's not included, um we don't, we won't report unfounded because we investigated it and determined it didn't happen. So it won't be included. Um any of the files that were created for information or prevention or assistance, say, we're getting called to assist B.C. ambulance service. Or um uh f- well, fire, right? Um those those files, they don't get included, so, does that make sense or, I don't know?
To follow up then, so if those aren't included in the stats, but it takes a lot of man-hours.
Oh, yeah.
To those.
Yeah.
So where do you keep track of that?
Well, we ha- we have them and that was the thing is, and Matthew and I have been going back and forth around this. Because we were told, um and I don't know, we can't find it anywhere, that we're supposed to report to our councils only things that are reportable to Statistics Canada. Cause that's a public thing, yet we wanted to report on how many calls we go to for mental health, cause it's a really big deal. Um and like one of our officers was injured the other day and his knee was um, his knee was dislocated during an apprehension of a violent mental health prisoner. One of our officers was punched repeatedly in the face, uh she's lucky that um this other prolific offender was there and actually helped her. Um because this this guy punched her several times in the face. And she's lucky she didn't like break, like break bones, it was very lucky, um mental health patient. So I mean, that they're high risk for us and um they take up a lot of our time. But we we are the best people equipped to deal with it, especially the volatile situations. When you the unpredictability, the volatility, and then you add illicit drugs. And you really have a recipe that you really need these intervention options. Um so I'm, I've been, I've eh fo- trying to find the answer of, can I report on that? Cause I think you guys probably would wanna know that, um how how much time do we spend um of our time on those kinds of things? Do you want to know that?
Yes.
Okay, right? Um and those are some of the things that I think that are, that especially mental health, because it really is something that we do spend a lot of time. We get a lot of calls for, check well-being, it's not a, it's not a criminal offense. But we do have some elderly in our community living alone, um fragile, right? And um we've had some some of those kind of calls. And um we go to check well-being because a family member hasn't heard from somebody for several days and um are they okay? And um, you know, God, God forbid, right, like are they, you know, they're alone and nobody's seen them. And so we get a lot of calls for that, is it a crime? No. Depends what you get when you get there, sometimes there is a crime when you get there, uh most of the time it isn't, it's just checking on somebody's well-being. Do we report on that, like, I don't know how much you want to know, right? But is one of our number one calls for services, road safety, um domestic violence, um and check well-being. And then the mental health, top five, one of those are in the top five.
Anything else from council? Thank you very much, Poppy.
Okay, yeah, and the only other thing I had was in a um, and Doug and I will meet and I can um, is, you know, we didn't, we didn't. Cost you guys as much money as.
The C A O speaks. Oh, he's joking.
You're trying to cut me off, right, cut me off, anyways, yeah, no, I mean, it, eh, I know policing is expensive. And and uh and, you know, I apologize for that and and it is um a big part of what you have to pay for. And um we uh, we're trying to give you your money's worth and do the best that we can. Um some of the stuff is, you know, we do have to provide um a healthy work environment and provide the stuff for officers. Um and so there's a couple of things, a couple of asks, one, um and we'll get the the information, I've got it here and I can give it to Doug. Um it's just um our chairs are uh dilapidated, um this chairs that the officers and and Mayor Seeger saw when she came the other day. Like some, like, we have chairs that are missing arms, we have chairs that are down to the metal. Um and our officers, some of them are spending hours and hours in these chairs typing reports and they're leaning on the chairs and they're they're scratching their arms and cutting, you know. So we need new chairs, um and then um for illicit drug, um we've been, we've been seizing a fair bit of crystal meth lately. Um which there's a high um chance of fentanyl being um in these these cris- this crystal meth. In the pipes, in the little baggies and that sort of thing. So there's a high potency drug, um hood fan, it's called, um it's a processing, it's a standalone. We don't have to pay to have it installed or anything like that, but it's a standalone, um it plugs in, it's got a fan and it and it's got, it's actually got a dark surface. So that you can see the white powder when you're processing, um and it's and it's got charcoal filters in case you're using any type of liquid. Um if you've got any kind of, cause we've had liquid GHB before. Um and so um we have, we need to have one of those in our office. Um and the other thing was um was for the uh, for processing um seized cell phones. And laptops and computers um for child pornography cases. And for um especially recently to um our drug investigations, um and homicides. Um anything that we're seizing like cell phones or any personal devices, um we get search warrants, we can search those. And um d- and find out, oh, excuse me, like ringing. Um so we can search those cell phones to um get evidence of um child luring, child pornography, that sort of thing. Right now, we're sending our stuff across the water to North Vancouver or wherever, whatever detachment can do it for us. We're paying overtime to the, to those um employees to search those devices for us. Um and pay and they they do this sort of all off the side of their desk, they get, so they get paid extra money to do this. Then um and I'm paying for the shipping to ship the items back and forth. And then I have to pay for them, the report time, and if they come back for court, so if this person pleads not guilty. Then this person, the the officer that did the downloads and got all the evidence from the phones, has to come here and testify in court. So I have to pay some, usually hotel fees um and ferry costs and all that stuff. Um last year, um I paid twenty-five thousand dollars in overtime and costs to do two child pornography investigations. So what I wanted to do was get the the um cellphone download equipment, computer equipment. We have it here and we train our guys here and then we don't have to um pay to send it away. And our officers here get good training, cause they could, they, this is a good skill to have. Um and also um we cut down on all the court costs and and overtime. Um I applied for a civil forfeitures grant, so civil forfeitures um gets the, gets the revenue from. Basically, usually drug busts and stuff. And we um, we've actually applied um to for civil forfeitures to have a look at the Nickerson property. They're very interested in the Nickerson property when we're done with our Criminal Code investigation, looking at seizing that property. And it becomes a proceeds of crime property and the the sale and and everything else of that property goes into um coffers. And I applied for the co- some of that money to pay for the cellphone download system and I didn't get, I didn't get the grant. Um they had so many applicants that um we didn't get the money for the cellphone download stuff. Um and that is another ask that I think is um important and so I'm asking, can ask for that as well. Um and it's, it seems like a lot of money, cause it's gonna probably be about thirty thousand dollars um for for what I'm asking. Um but I think, you know, in this, like, the cost that um that we haven't taken from you. Um in our uh, in our lack of um of members, I'm hoping that we can find that money. So even if it's not today, we can budget for it or something, but um I really need that equipment, so.
So you'll leave that information with Mr. Stewart, is what I'm hearing? Okay, perfect. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
For your presentation and all that information and for the good work that you're doing.
Thank you very much.
And thank you for staying in emergency with the patients coming from a nurse. We appreciate you guys.
Well, and you know what, we had, we need, it, work goes both ways, right, the members, and you guys treat us great too, right? And uh and I know Nicole, when she was injured the other night, she had great care. And um was right to the front of the line and they're taking care of her, you know, it's uh, it's important, so, thank you.
Tough jobs, thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to new business, is there any new business? No, moving on to item five, no, there's no business items, cause it's empty. So I will ask for adjournment, all in favor? Thank you.